Speak, any matters from the public? Okay. Approval of the minutes. Any comments on the minutes? Um, I had. I was gonna say, I have two on the April minutes. One is on the second page of the minutes, it has a header, an old header. And then the second one. It was reported that the. Code sections for the. Closed meeting weren't in the minutes. Probably should be completely make sense to include in the minutes, even though it's in the resolution. Anything else?
Uh, under number one, you would just need to insert the word by second is by director storm. And be in a meeting where Richie is not in the ten minutes, was that?
That would have been equal fifteen.
And he's listed as staff president.
No, that's a good job, Lauren Bodens. She's senior assistant county attorney's president.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the minutes?
As amended?
As amended. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Right.
All right, the minutes are approved. Financial report, Avery's gonna give us the financial.
Yes, so we have a new financial year that's rolled over as of July first. So what you'll see here on the first page is again, just a snapshot of just this financial year, not the performance agreements altogether. So the top half is the starting revenue projections for each of those accounts. We've added the PT Hotel to the bonds section. You can read through those, some of the tax rebates, we're still waiting on final numbers for those. So we'll update those as we get them in probably in August and September. Some of the other agreements, Siller Pollinator was finished from this side, so we removed that. And we added some of the Go Virginia stuff, and then the legal services and more admin type stuff at the bottom.
Okay.
And then the second half is just an update of the performance agreements. Not much has changed on this front. Uh, this is just the most recent numbers that we have, so this will look very familiar.
And do we have an end of the year?
We do not quite have an end of the year, I will have that for next time.
Any questions or comments? Okay, so. We were moved, we were gonna switch things around, it was still precision. So. Do we wanna do? Fiscal services first, or no, we're gonna do Rebecca first. So. Regional entrepreneurship initiative, little tempers, grand match. So. I am going to recuse myself from this, especially because I am on these Venture Central. So I think. Well, I can probably still.
You can stay.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if if points of order arise, our distinguished dice here can handle it.
And in the spirit of disclosures, I also mean a member of the Venture Central Board and my capacity as staff. Um, and so. Um, I'm happy to serve as a resource for information, uh, but something like Donna and for her. That will turn it over to Rebecca Haddock, who is the executive director of Venture Central and Bo Rice, who's the new Central Virginia Small Business Development Center. Um, President CEO.
Director.
Director. Um, uh, he has just hit the ground running really hard. Um, Director Hood was, uh, present for the small business conference that SBDC held a couple of weeks ago. Really well-attended event, a lot of great energy coming out of that. Uh, really appreciate all the work that you're doing with the staff. Um, and I'm excited to hear more about the fuel project. Thank you both for being here.
Great, thank you. Well, hi, nice to meet some of you for the first time, um, see others who you know for a while. So I'm Rebecca Haddock. Um, Venture Central, just a lot of folks aren't familiar with what this entity is. This, uh, entity was created, it's a 501(c)(3), so it's its own organization. Was housed with the Chamber of Commerce under a different name and was resurrected in 2021. To work on overall entrepreneurial ecosystem development. So in a lot of communities where you have innovation and. R and D facilities like we have here, you have ecosystem coordinating entities that work with the many different service providers like the Small Business Development Center. And we have community investment collaborative, some of BioHeaven others. And evaluate what are the needs so we can create more of the high-paying innovation-based jobs and get these. Innovations that are coming out of the university, that are coming out of our SBIR recipients. Into the market faster and build our innovation economy and thus tax base. So that's the purpose of Venture Central. Venture Central was also designed to work on and house programs that didn't fit neatly in some of the other entities that exist. So it's truly a support organization, it is designed to support innovation, commercialization. Um, not do anything duplicative of the other organizations that you all are supporting and that exist here, like the Small Business Development Center. Um, and Bo Rice, the the director of SBDC is doing some incredible things there. He's going to be a partner on this, um, with Community Investment Collaborative, who is the host of the SBDC. So. This project, which I'll explain, basically half of it is going to CIC and SBDC to manage the capital project. And then the other, um, half of the project is what Venture Central will manage. So the project is called Fuel because we are focused on unifying our entrepreneurial landscape. And the, has anybody read the REI reports that came out of Go Virginia? It's the Regional Entrepreneurship Initiative. Okay, thank you, Todd. Of course. Um, so.
That is getting out for me.
Well, you all know, there's so many great studies that have happened, right? The SEDS, Conference Against Economic Development Strategy, obviously the Alamooral County Strategy is in draft, the city. Um, Go Virginia funds the regional entrepreneurship strategy. And so that has been published, there are nine recommendations. This project is supporting three of those recommendations. That all of the economic development professionals, professionals and the entrepreneur service organizations, as well as a number of CEOs in the region have approved for us to start with. Um, so. We're asked, I'll give you the ask right away, the reason we're here is we need $10,000 in additional funding for the fuel capital component of this project. The piece that, um, SBDC and CIC are managing is pretty intensive. Charlottesville has also agreed to provide a $10,000 commitment, that's $5,000 a year over two years. And. Venture Central has a, um. A grant from Charlottesville and another one from Alamooral to basically fund my position. And that's what allowed me to go into Venture Central and start working on these things. That is a match for this grant. The project is a total of 690,600. Um, we're asking Go Virginia for 440,000 or $220,000 a year. That is divided among these three projects. Local match that has been provided totals 250,600. 10 of the 11 municipalities in Region Nine are participating financially in this. And we're expecting it to start in January of next year. The problem with solving, one is lack of regional coordination. Businesses, you know, and conversations that we had earlier, you know, businesses have to navigate a lot of different resources. They have to look for different service providers, they have struggle accessing capital. And they also have difficulty navigating where to go, right? They may have a headquarters in Alamooral, but they may need to set up manufacturing in Louisa, or they may take off for Waynesboro, which we really don't want them to do. So that coordination and having a regional coordinating committee is one of the initiatives here. Um, the second is missing professional networks. We experimented at SBDC and started a CEO group of some of our high-tech CEOs that were raising money. Basically creating jobs, now that group, which is about three years old, um, has raised about 50 million among them. And they employ probably more than 40 people, I actually haven't counted. Um, they just feed off of each other and we know the peer networks are incredible for companies really building. So the second recommendation, which is recommendation three in the REI, is to support peer networks in these key industry-specific. Areas that are the Go Virginia target sectors. And then the third one is there, the number one thing that came across in the REI study was capital gaps. People struggling to access capital, so that's fuel capital, and that's what we're here to ask you about today. Um, I'll go quickly through this, Fuel Coalition is that first. Support project that's bringing together regional leaders, Fuel Connection is the peer networks. And Fuel Capital is capital education and access to reduce funding gaps and build business expansion. Bo will give some detail on that. Um, there's many elements to that from not just accessing traditional capital loans, CDFIs, but also angel and risk capital. So Fuel Coalition will be managed by Venture Central. And our goal there is to unify goals for the five Go Virginia target sectors. Um, are you all familiar with which, what the target sectors are? Okay, so life sciences, information technology, business services. Yeah, and agribusiness, yeah, yeah, thank you, um, food and beverage manufacturing. Um, what we expect to come out of that, you know, when we are all growing in the same direction and we have a plan, we're gonna get there faster. So we wanna get established goals and figure out who does what, what support can we get behind this, and we have a solid. Um, Fuel Connection is the second one, this is the peer groups. This is convening C-suite leadership, um, implementing activities in peer-to-peer forums, letting them connect not only to each other's networks, but to the resources that exist in the. Localities here, in the state and federally and internationally. We have a lot of access to resources, SBDC has been the house of where is that knowledge and how do they get connected? But it's not always easy to access for folks, it's not widely known, we wanna increase the knowledge. And frankly, a great example here in, um. Charlottesville, we have the number one SBIR recipient in the state of Virginia and number five in the country, that's Luna Labs. They have the ability to do prototyping, destruction testing. Um. Programming for, it's an engineer's dream over there, I don't know if you all have been there, but it's incredible. For other companies. And so based on discussions about this, and they're part of our CEO Advisory Board, they're willing to offer those services to other companies, which will help. R and D iterate faster. So just bringing these folks together has a big impact. Um, so that's part of the connection network, and I'm gonna turn it over to Bo to talk about fuel capital.
Yeah, so unfortunately, one of the biggest, um, obstacles to success that we see in our offices, folks come in, they've got a great idea, they've got a great plan, they got a lot of passion, but accessing capital can be a challenge. So, you know, some of these folks are looking for traditional capital loans, which we can help them with. We have an excellent commercial banker on, on, as part of our network, who really helps folks navigate that. Um, out in some of the rural communities, it gets harder. Um, but we also really need some help in getting. The entrepreneurs aware of what the, what the access points are, as well as the bankers, the risk capital, the angel networks. Aware of who needs capital and, you know, what's, what their mission is. Additionally, there's just a lot of folks who could be, uh, you know, qualified investors in town. Who are investing in Boston and New York and San Francisco, when there are amazing high-tech, high-value companies right here in Charlottesville. That they're just not becoming aware of. And really part of this goal is to engage some of these family offices, which I just don't think has really happened a lot in Alamooral. And want to get those, uh, family offices, these trusts aware of some of the opportunities locally. As well as, you know, just shoring up some of the, um. The access into Cav Angels, into Charlottesville Angel Network. And, uh, helping those folks, uh, access entrepreneurs. We also really, as part of this grant, wanna go out into some of the neighborhoods that have got a lot of, uh, folks who are potentially, uh, qualified investors. And making them aware of the Angel Network opportunities, as well as, you know, some of the folks in Nelson County, perhaps in Wintergreen, Caswick. You know, Farming, Borishead, there are lots of places there. And as well as some of the, uh, work environments where we've got a lot of folks who would, you know, almost certainly qualify as, as qualified investors. And making them aware of deploying their, you know, the potential for deploying capital locally.
Uh, the outcomes for this grant, we're assuming that over the first three years, there will be 55 jobs created. Um, businesses expanded, we estimated 15, we're taking the advice of Go Virginia, trying to be conservative. Um, businesses served, uh, 50, funds raised, we put it at 6 million, but. SBDC and, you know, what was it, 2021, 22, 23? Helped companies raise more money than the 18 years prior, and are you over 200 million in the last five years?
Yeah, our office, and I would love to take credit for this, um, but it's really Rebecca, this was done under Tullidge. We've added the 25 SPDCs in the state of Virginia, we've been the number one SBDC, highest-producing office, I think is six of the past seven years. So, um, if you look at the, the, the impact, the things I'm most proud of in being affiliated with SBDC. Is that folks who come into our office and meet with a business advisor, they grow their jobs at 10x what folks who don't come in and meet with an SBDC person. They go their revenue 3x. So these investments are amazing, there is huge value that's demonstrable through self-reporting from the entrepreneurs who come into our office. Showing that they are growing employees and they're growing revenue at a materially faster pace than folks who aren't coming into our office.
So conservative return on investment.
And that, that, those are the Virginia numbers. Our numbers are, we're the top performing office in the state, so I would, I don't know exactly how we can stack up against that, but it's better.
Yeah, and then the key really is, this is a regional effort. Um, 10 of the 11 localities in Region Nine are actively participating. Charlottesville and Alamooral total commitment, remembering that 50,000 of that is coming from the prior commitment to Venture Central. Um, would be 60,000, and then another 128,600 collectively among the other municipalities. Um, all the economic development directors have provided input and helped us select these projects that we're gonna work on. So why support Fuel? It's building on proven success. Um, Venture Central, CIC, SBDC have all managed many grants and had all successful outcomes and met the, the goals of the grants. Um. The approach is based on the REI, there were actually over 400 touchpoints for coming up with what are the recommendations, as well as using national studies. Based on communities that have built innovation communities. We're early, right? We've got a lot of R and D, we've got a lot of great technology and great resources, but we haven't built a ton of infrastructure for these companies. So we've got a lot of great opportunity here. Um, and the design is sustainable, a lot of the work that we're gonna do, it marries nicely into existing entities. And, um, things like peer groups become self-running over time, so. That's it. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a couple, um. So speaking of marrying. What is your strategy to get the home offices, the potential angel investors married up with?
Great question. So we've talked.
How do they know that's even available, you know, cause?
I don't think they know it's available today. So, so there's some low-hanging fruit there. So, you know, fortunately, we have relationships with folks who live in these neighborhoods. And we're going to leverage those relationships to identify folks who can. I mean, really, the idea is it'd be a lunch and learn, or a cocktail party, or a breakfast, or something where we come in. We would do some storytelling, we'd bring in an entrepreneur who said once upon a time, I was looking for capital. And it was hard for me to find, and I went to Cannes, and, um, they did this, and here's where my business grew, it grew, and we had a successful exit. And here was, you know, the outcome for the investors. And doing that in each of these neighborhoods, or however we can aggregate qualified investors. But it's, it's storytelling, really, and just telling the success that's already here, it's already been proven. And educating more folks about the opportunity of deploying capital here in the county.
Would you mind just giving a couple of anecdotes of successes that you've had? Maybe, cause then I could get my brain around.
So I.
From the technology standpoint, cause I was the, like Emily said, I was the. Person on the, on the small business thing, and it was really no technology. Baker. People that, you know, are helping, you know, mentally disabled folks. It wasn't, it was, there was no technology for them.
Well, the, the first event that day, I don't know if you saw.
No, no.
The AI, um, uh, group that we had, Michael Pritchard, who was one of the co-founders of Willa Tree. We had Greg Frank, who's, you know, had one of the Felton company, investing companies. Um, AI true expert, um, and then we had, uh, someone from RootStim, which is an automation AI company.
That you've had that one.
Yeah, so we, we had.
Good stuff to eat, you know?
Yeah, so I, I have a technology background, that's, I have 30 years of implementing e-commerce sites for, um. Everyone from FUBU to Ethan Allen to the WWE to, um. Tori Burch, um, Calvin Klein, and, and so technology is my passion, that's what I've done. We're doing a lot of, in fact, on Friday, I would invite you all, we're doing an AI training on Friday morning. We're also doing training on AI coding, so we're, we're really out in the forefront of technology. And educating so much of the worst about how they can employ the latest technology to grow their businesses.
From the perspective of the angel networks, I've been a member of Cannes for 10 years, I'm on the board. Um, I'm close with Cav Angels, we get anywhere from 40 to 60 applications a month for funding, they're not all local. But more than a third of our investments are local and have been over the course of 10 years. And regarding your exit question, we just exited, we had a company go public, it was a 20x return. Yep, so.
The company's name was?
He, I'm in it. What is it?
Forget it, name any company, name any company, that's it.
Both, no, what? Crap.
I'm sorry.
I'm sending you the email, cause I can't believe I can't think of it right now, but it, it's went public. I'll take, the other one though, um, Carpe, we just got another, like, check, we actually got, um, a Forex return on that one and just got a check this week because we still own equity in that company. Um, that's Carpe, that's out of North Carolina, that's not a local. Anyway, it's gonna.
I didn't mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was, what I was trying to really get my brain around is if I had some, a couple, a couple of advantages, maybe that touched like Injic or touched the. You know, Rubena Initiative, and I, it would make sense to.
Well, and this, by the way, I didn't mention, which I should have mentioned. Um. The programming for the peer groups is going to focus on manufacturers and to use technology companies. Because we have identified many of them, and they are asking for specialized programming. Um, we have Gen Edge, we have Apex Accelerator, the UVA School of Engineering is interested in providing support for that. And these companies, like I mentioned, you know, Luna Labs and what they have, already, these CEOs have been connecting via our advisory board. And now, one of the companies, North Fork, is gonna be using the services of Luna Labs to do some prototyping for him. Right, so it's just, yeah, making these connections, but we are trying, and we'll work with the Innovation Corridor on this as well as GAC, once that gets reformed. Our role is not to run these things, it's to bring the assets together, to make it happen. Yes, and be the facilitator and the supporter.
Yeah, so I had a question related, the opposite side of that, and you kind of answered it with. You're not controlling every aspect of this, but what is a, what is a typical failure look like? And what are, what kind of mitigated? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it becomes a lifestyle business. You know, where they're just like, oh yeah, no, I'm actually not gonna grow, I'm just.
Right.
Producing these barrels of. That is probably all about. Um, so, but no, there's a lot, they, you know, or they just tank, like, you know, there was a, the. What's, what's where I'm looking for, the drone company, and then all of a sudden, there's all these other drone companies, and they just didn't get the contracts. Um, there's, there's a great book, if anybody's interested, it's called Angel Investing, it's. A fantastic book about how it works. Um, and you've gotta have 20 investments, and one of those is gonna hit. Right?
So let's just accept it as part of the ecosystem.
Yeah, yeah. But then, you know, but the fun of being in a local angel network is you get to meet the entrepreneurs, and you get to know them, and you can actually potentially help them. And the entrepreneurs like that as well.
And you get to meet the other investors and these folks, you know, that have got a lot of capital to deploy, can come up with ideas together, and find other investments. And it is fun. I mean, it is, it's a lot of fun to come see these folks come in and tell their story, how they came up with this idea. And, you know, to get hard questions from a, a group of sophisticated investors and, and see them answer those questions with authority or not.
Yeah, sure.
And we're actually teaching at the America's SBDC National Conference on this topic, so we're well-suited to train people. Um, I know we're taking up a lot of time, any more questions?
Forgive my unawareness, but the, the investors that meet, when they meet the entrepreneurs. Do they invest in a specific entrepreneur, or do they invest globally? You know, for a group of them?
Yeah, that's, that is great, it depends on the group. Um, so Cav Angels and Charlottesville Angel Network, both individuals, investors decide if they're gonna invest. So they don't have a fund where, um, and that's something we wanna develop actually in this region, is a fund that is a follow-on fund. So when anybody makes an investment, the fund follows on with additional capital. We don't have that. But yeah, that, that's one way to do it, it's here, people make individual decisions. In Cav and Cannes, the individual decides, do I wanna put money into this or not? And then they all invest in one special purpose vehicle, so you don't have 20 people on the caption, you have one LLC.
The, the format is that, um, you know, everyone gets together, there's some sort of social moment. And then the, um, entrepreneurs leave, one is invited in, they tell their story, they field questions from the audience, they leave. And then the folks in Cannes would say, I'm interested in this, or I don't know anything about that industry, and there's some discussion, someone, and then if, if there is a mentor, there's someone who's appointed to do due diligence. And, you know, but, you know, as Rebecca said, it's not a.
Like a big shark tank.
Kind of. Yeah.
It benefit from all the other brains in the room.
And sure, my firm belongs as well, and I'm sure if anybody wants to go, we'd be happy to have you come and check it out, cause it's, it's, it's very interesting.
Absolutely, we'd love to have any of you as a guest, it's just a fun thing to do.
And what, once again, they invest in a specific.
That's right.
Yeah. Or they may take several, five individuals, maybe five different ones. Or all five of them may take one.
That's correct.
All right, is there, there a motion? Or is there further physical discussion? With expenditure funds of it? Is there a merger? Oh, that means approve the reservation.
Everybody does that, it happens all the time.
All right. Uh. Further discussion, all right, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Can you pose? Upstanding. All right, thank you.
Thank you all, thank you so much.
And if, if anybody wants to go to a Cannes meeting, let Rebecca know, or let me know.
Can I distribute some in, some Venture Central, you know, reports? Well, Andy and Morgan.
Okay, and maybe, they meet on the third, Monday. All right, so moving along.
Yeah, he's, yeah. Very good. Space is probably in the.
Thank you both, thank you. And then, um. So now onto the fiscal services agreement. So. Andy and Morgan are here to talk about fiscal services agreement, which I am also, Steve.
You're on it, man, you are on it, you're an animal.
And just a very, just a very quick introduction of Andy, Assistant CFO, and Morgan Rice with their grant student. Um, uh, this is a follow-on to the, uh, the board supervisors and the Economic Development Authority, um, MOU process, so we have a new MOU in place. Um, there was, in, in one of the drafts of the MOU, there had been.
Um, there was, in in one of the drafts of the MOU, there had been talk of of um. Uh, an administrative fee being applied to funds that the EDA would would interact with. And um and then there was a determination that it was probably the most consistent with how the county um forms agreements with other entities. To have that as a separate fiscal services agreement outside of the MOU, so let the MOU sort of stay a whole. Agreement between the EDA and the Board Supervisors and then let a fiscal services agreement. Um, feel with more of the sort of the nitty gritty details, um and so that is what is before you today. And because um Andy oversees um the this, the relationships that the county has with partner agencies. Uh across the board, uh we asked him uh to uh just spend a minute talking about uh this approach and and how it sort of fits into the bigger picture.
Thank you for doing my introduction. So yeah, uh Morgan and I are here for this action item for the Economic Development Authority, we have just a couple slides and a brief presentation before we turn it over. EA for any questions in action. I thank y'all for having us this afternoon. Uh before I ask a uh an authority or board to approve anything, I'd like to provide the picture of where we've been to get to this point and also what happens next. Uh, this agreement really originated almost a year ago with Joint Economic Development Authority and Board of Supervisors meeting that really recognized that the. Fiscal agent agreement had not been updated in some time, and since we do periodically with all of our fiscal agents, we want to stay on top of those agreements. Uh so that led to a small ongoing discussion with staff in the EDA, Chair Long facilitated discussion to get feedback from the Board Supervisors that culminated. In that adoption that uh Emily Kilroy mentioned in March and April, with the idea that separate fiscal services agreement would come. So that is uh today what we have prepared for the EDA, and I'll note that after today, if the EDA approves this. Staff, uh county staff will then take that to the Board of Supervisors for approval as the final step in that process. I'll say that uh before I turn it over to uh Morgan for walking through the agreement, uh this is really based, as Emily said, upon looking at all the common agreements we have. With the partner agencies, with our standard practices, and also reflecting feedback from the EDA and the board in these prior discussions. Uh so just to hit the highlights, I'll turn it over to Miss Rakes.
Here to quickly summarize, um, so this MOA proposes a one percent of incoming funds received by the EDA. Where the funds are external to Alamo County. Um, the MOA also outlines the core services that the county is going to provide. Um, the County Attorney's Office providing a set uh legal services and the Department of Finance and Budget providing fiscal management services. Um accompanying the MOA is an operational guide, um which details each of these services. Uh meant to be updated from time to time as needed. Um, in addition, we've also um identified additional optional services that the EDA is not currently utilizing in case. Um, those are needed in the future, um of course, this would need to be finalized before implemented and then added to the operational guide. Um, so that is a very quick summary, but I will open it up for questions.
Any questions or comments? I mean, basically, these are services that if we were not the everybody around the county, we'd have to go to somebody else. Alright, not hearing any comments, any questions, any discussion? Alright, is there a notion on to approve the discussion services? Memorands of agreement?
Just by way of clarification, it's almost a conditional approval of um the Board of Supervisors doesn't make any changes, then. It would become the agreement, if the Board of Supervisors does make some changes, then it would come back.
So this is on you, B.
And the high level construct of the one percent on the external funds was part of the discussion that was. That's ours in December, uh when there was a work session on the uh MOU with the board, and so uh would you believe that this is consistent with what the board is expecting to see?
Alright, is there a notion? Let me read it here since. I move that this authority approving a patch. Economic Development Authority Fiscal Services Memorandum Agreement between the County of Alamo, Virginia and this Economic Development Authority of Alamo, Virginia. And transmit the same to the Alamo County Board of Supervisors for its consideration. If unchanged by the Board of Supervisors, then the adoption of this motion will constitute this authority's final approval. And adoption of the Fiscal Services Memorandum of Agreement. Any discussion? All in favor? Alright. I don't think so.
We don't, we don't have.
Alright, thank you, appreciate your work on this. Alright, so are we gonna? We're gonna just kind of go into Economic Development Strategic Plan and Staff Report.
We'll do a really quick hit on the staff report, uh if time allows.
Alright.
We can do a check-in.
Alright.
Alright, uh so on the Economic Development Strategic Plan, uh you all have a special session with the Board of Supervisors on August thirteenth. I know some of you will be participating remotely, um the same is actually true on the board side, uh for those who are physically assembled, we'll be here in just a couple weeks. And um and looking at a draft document, um the um since the last time the EDA had a meeting. Um, you know, we looked at that point, we were looking at goals and objectives, now we have goals, objectives and strategies, so that was what was sent to you. Uh ahead of this meeting and we'll we'll step through those this afternoon. Um, today I got the draft, like a Word document version, so we've been looking over the course of this project. At what essentially a slide deck that they add slides to as they go along. Um, and we're now at the point where uh where they're now in a Word document, it's a report format. Um, they're they're streamlining the language, et cetera, um I got that today, um and so we'll be um transmitting that to you probably tomorrow. Um and we'll post that also to our Engage page so that that's available for the public to review as well. Um, I'll say just a couple of things about some of the changes that have happened since the strategies were put out. And just through the feedback that we've received, um changes that we've made that are incorporated into that draft report document. Um, and again, we look forward to sharing that with you uh later this week. Um, before I do that, just sort of where we are, um this project officially kicked off last August, uh when you had a joint meeting with Board Supervisors and. Um, so this is not a full look back at what we've done over the course of the year, uh but just sort of where we've been since the last time we were with the EDA in May. Um, so we reviewed the goals and objectives with you all in May, um we. Uh presented on the project to the Scottsville Town Council at a joint meeting with Board Supervisors that was also in May. And then we also had a work session with the Board Supervisors on the goals and objectives, um at that meeting, we asked, you know, if there are goals. That you would like to see amended, uh struck, added, um that that would be, that session was the time for the board to give that type of feedback. Um and they were satisfied with the goals that we had, uh with some notes about how we might do uh the strategies and actions to. Uh, in June, we held a community luncheon learn, it's a it's a webinar, um that they gave, a webinar series that the county runs for. Uh major projects, um and we had a good, good participation in that, good questions and answers from the community. Uh, we did a second community survey, we had done one at the start of this project, um and this one asked us to share feedback on the five goals that we had. Um, we refined the goals and objective based on all the feedback that we received from the EDA, the board of the community. Um and our stakeholder committee as well, um and then drafted strategies from how those might be. Um, so here we are in July, seeking EDA feedback, um and you all have an opportunity to discuss with your sub- this body. Um, anything that you might want to be sure to share, uh when you're seated with the Board Supervisors next month. Um and then at the joint meeting, the board will be um in a position to adopt the uh the the plan at that point. Some of the changes that we've made in the past couple of weeks, um. Uh, and this first bullet really tries to cover, um that the comp plan update is happening at the same time. As the Economic Development Strategic Plan update, um there there traditionally has been an economy focused chapter in the comprehensive plan. And so we've been working really closely with the comp plan team to ensure that the two uh work together, um to articulate the county strategy. And goals, um David Dennis um was here uh at our last meeting, um it was last meeting. Um, to sort of share where they are on the thriving economy chapter, um and so we've been trying to work uh iteratively as the strategic plan. Continues to frame up, um to ensure that the comp plan language that reflects uh they reflect each other as well. Um, so uh we've we've updated the draft of the thriving economy chapter to reflect the draft Economic Development Strategic Plan. Uh, we've added the target sectors that have been identified in the strategic plan, we've also done a refresh, uh where we had that refreshed data. Um, uh because that original chapter draft was started two years ago, so we've got some fresh data. We also added a clear articulation in the Economic Development Strategic Plan Report Document. Um, how the comp plan interfaces with the strategic plan, um as well as other county plans, you can see this is a quote from the draft plan. Um, that references the comprehensive plan as well as the county's housing plan, the climate action plan, the biodiversity action plan. Uh as examples of of, you know, how the how staff evaluate things um holistically, we try to be robust in our analysis. Um and the Economic Development Strategic Plan would sit alongside those other plans as the Board Supervisors, um. Um, you know, this body, the Planning Commission, think about uh individual applications, they have these other plans to sort of draw from, to understand how it. Fits the big picture. We also added a new creative summary, um so you can kind of dive right into the goals. Um and the rationale in a digestible way and streamline the text, we've got a lot of feedback that's very pretty redundant as you get through it, um and so. Um, so it's it's a much tighter document, um and it's. Any questions on that? Um, so these are the slides that we provided to you that again sort of spell out, um how we'll go about implementing the strategy. Um, uh and so I'll I'll try to hit these at a high level, um but if you, so if you want to talk, pause and talk, um let me know. Um, the first goal is about intelligence and national security.
I guess. Maybe I can add to what you were saying in terms of the process, and that is, um, one of the things. Definitely talking about sort of what what our role is and how we need to be involved in this, I think one of the things that I wanted to be clear about. Because it sometimes gets lost, this is, this is the Alamo County's economic development plan, it's not the EDA's economic development. So what, you know, we're providing our input. And guidance and suggestions to the board, but ultimately, it's their decision. I don't know that that was always, well, it wasn't always clear, so I wanted to make sure as we were thinking about it. Thinking about it that way.
Um, so the first one talks about um how to focus on the Ravenna Futures Project, it includes um. Uh, a plan, a plan for the hub that looks at land use, infrastructure, development priorities, um how to target business attraction and expansion efforts. Um launching a business attraction campaign and um advocating for infrastructure upgrades.
I want to follow on with with what Don said, and this is in general. But that that very first strategy is an example, um. I'm used to when you get into strategies that you identify who will be responsible. And in charge of doing something and when it will be done, what kind of deadline there will be. And perhaps what level of priority it is. When I look at this strategic plan that we saw, there must be a hundred strategies. Well, what's number one? What's in the top ten? What has the biggest bang for your effort? And that's not reflected in here at all, and as Don mentioned. I, other than one little segment here that does reference the EDA. It doesn't say, so what's the EDA's role in this? What's the Economic Development Office role? What is the Board of Supervisors role? There's, that seems to be missing at the strategy level, at least in the strategic plans I've always worked on. And in my many years of experience, if that is missing, it becomes a shelf document because nobody's responsible for doing any of it.
Yeah, that's that's great feedback, um we, uh Dawn and I, uh we're chatting a couple of weeks ago about, um. It would be great to have a work session. So that the scope that the the scope that we've engaged the consultants and help with doesn't dive all the way into implementation. Um, and so I I, the team is going to do an implementation. Sort of off-site to sort of work through who's on who's on point, what are the biggest priorities, what are the lowest hanging fruit is? What do we need to engage the stakeholder committee, you know? That that committee will not meet again as a committee. Um, but it's comprised of all of the partners that we work with on a regular basis, and so what can we tap and ask, that's essential to focus on, people I have to focus on. Um, and and, you know, sort of in that same vein, uh a work session with the EDA. Um, after after adoption, where we can really dig into what are your all's priorities, um. Uh, we've got a a financial report that helps us see very clearly, um on a month-to-month basis, the the. The un, um. Um, the uncommitted funds that the EDA has access to and. Uh, you know, it might be helpful for you all to articulate together sort of a framework for how you would decide. When and how and where and at what level to make investments of those funds that are at really your direction and discretion. Um, that can help all of us sort of look for opportunities that would be sort of a win from your perspective. Um and and advance the plan, um and so both, um our our plan has been get get the get the strategies and actions in place. Goals, strategies and actions in place, and then um we'll have a a sort of a period of time immediately following the plan's adoption. To really start looking at what does it look like to commit resources to it.
Emily, just on this one. I sent you a note, there's this YouTube video of. What's going on with Vanna station? Who made that and how did that become to in existence?
Yeah, um so we uh.
Great, I mean, I just, I.
Yeah, um so we, uh as part of the grant, we've had that big grant, um. Application and as part of the process for that, we did a site visit with the funder, uh and so we, uh. We put, we put some things out on the property to help sort of show, it's such a large property, um sort of show the the chunks of it. And what the different opportunities on this um land base could be, um and we we also staked uh. The road, the future road alignment, um so that you can sort of see how Wilder's Road will would continue on into the future. And provide access to those land base, uh and we thought it looked so good, we said we should get a drone video. Made to be able to capture that and be able to share that out. Um, so so I'm working with a couple of local contractors who were able to put that together. Yeah, um and that's a resource that we can, it's on the county's YouTube page, it was in the latest Ravenna Futures newsletter. Um, and so it's a resource that we can share out uh with folks uh who are interested in learning the law and maybe can't get out there or. Um, the entire property was covered in a sheet of ice, um for the month of January and a big chunk of February. Uh, and so it helps them see a little bit more potential, um on the ground is a little bit harsh. And that's uh that's kind of a core business attraction type effort, um so when I think this plan talks about business attraction. Um, and often folks will sort of say, what does that really mean? Um, it's kind of just putting your best foot forward on um on why. Um, some of our sites are good opportunities and more importantly, why our community is a good opportunity, um so it's not just focusing on. Uh, how much acreage do we have in different areas of the county and what the infrastructure opportunities are? Um, but why this is the place for companies to locate to uh for their employees and their calling for life. Um, so this is talking about the Central Virginia Innovation Corridor, looking at how we'll work with Go Virginia, Regional Parkers. Um, on the the ongoing strategic roadmap process, um and continue to work with um. Apsia Central Virginia, which is a defense sector professional organization, as well as the Defense Affairs Committee, um and others to continue to support that sector's needs. Um, we're looking at um on career pathways, um looking at network-based. Our work-based learning models, um so making sure that folks in the community know how to access careers in that sector. And working with workforce development, public education workers, um to help sort of illuminate those paths. Um and do some employer education convenings, um so that um. And do some employer educator convenings so that those curriculum don't sit on a shelf. Then get stale, they'll sort of stay real time and continue to be helpful. And then this is on the business attraction side, talking about Almaral County with a brand identity narrative. Proactive marketing and business traction campaign and leveraging partnerships to continue to reach each other, align with regional partners. In the life sciences space. A lot of focus on facilities in this, in this section. So looking at a life sciences infrastructure plan that meets the specialized needs of this sector. As we talk to companies in the biotech life sciences space, they, a lot of them are so small, they, they need a piece of. A specialized equipment or specialized room or specialized service providing, or service provider. But they can't, they can't own it, they don't, they're not large enough to run it themselves, maximize that capacity, et cetera. And so how do we, how do we look at partnering, matching people together? You know, this person has this equipment, let's make sure these other folks know about that. Value add that we can provide. Continuing to really focus on Sebo Bio Hub and the regional stakeholders. Who are already sort of have an eye on those infrastructure gaps and then looking at how permitting policies can support. The deployment of life science facilities. Position as the hub for, for biotech and life sciences. To continuing to focus on the innovation corridor project that we've got as well as. Commercialization support network to, to help meet some of the, the needs of our startups as they try to scale. This is a workforce development partnership that Sebo Bio Hub is leading, looking really closely with P V C C. With public schools and the university on making sure that we've got the right training. Around and that employers know how to find students graduating with great skills.
Is there communication to the students? About these opportunities to stay in the area?
Yeah, that's.
Michael Torren in high school, I felt that that was really lucky. You know, that can, you know, the businesses know about the students, but do the students have that reverse?
Yeah, we, during the stakeholder engagement process, we had folks from the workforce program. At Almaral County Public Schools at every single session and they were, they were taking so many notes. And you know, as the, as the Sebo Bio Hub Bio Bridge Project, which you all supported was kicking off. We had a lot of, we had a lot of CEOs of small companies in the same room with some of the workforce development partners. And they were articulating, you know, some of the challenges that they face. One of them is just scale, so it's, you can't, you don't know Lina Labs and you don't know African Scientific. And you don't know the very many smaller ones that we have. It's hard to know that that's even an option and that that's even here. And so some of the work is really just, how do you make the one-off job placements on these companies' websites? Big enough that students see, wow, there are a ton of biotech jobs, even though Lina Labs only has two. And African only has five, there's a, there's a huge opportunity when you put it all together. And so that's some of the work that we're, that the stakeholders are working on right now. Which is really, it's been really incredible to see how quickly folks are able to kind of make those connections and build those bridges. And, and so, you know, part of that workforce development piece of high schools is getting partnerships to. Host interns, host student interns at companies, have companies come in for career days. Mentorship that can happen at the center, the center buildings. And so all that work is. It's starting to happen and this is really a, a way for us to say, we should keep investing in those types of activities. Because they help, they help connect all of those, those folks together. And it's helpful when we talk to companies to be able to say, the high school has programs that put kids on a biotech of sciences track. And so they're coming out of high school, not with a degree, but with an understanding and a skill set. That for, for non-college bound students are good job opportunities. And for college bound students, it's kind of a leg up into what would it be like to, to operate in that sector as a career.
Are the school counselors and the college counselors and so forth, are they aware of these programs? Because if they're advising students, that might be another way also to communicate to students instructively, right?
Yeah, I know that, that's, that's exactly the type of opportunity that we're continuing to try to grow.
Don't want to repeat myself, but the next step in all of these strategies is the key. Most of these strategies say convene a group. There's going to be a, a meeting, there's going to be discussion, there's, we're going to bring some people together for whatever purpose. But it doesn't say what the outcome of that will be necessarily. It's developing those outcomes that will determine if anything actually happens. For instance, in the education area that you were just discussing. Somebody needs to say, okay, we're going to develop an internship program for middle school students or high school students. We're going to create a biotechnology pathway from high school to community college to university. There, there need to be those specific outcome events or accomplishments. And they need to come out of these groups that are being recommended to come together. Somebody's going to have to monitor that and lead that to make sure it happens. Because having been involved in these same educational discussions for the last 25 years. Too often, the discussion ends, we all go home and pat ourselves on the back and nothing happens. There has to be specific outcomes of these kinds of get togethers. Otherwise, again, I'll go back and say this will become a shelf document.
This is another business attraction item, so design and execute a business attraction campaign. Looking at opportunities for select third street shows, even for direct investment. Coordinating regional development partners, Sebo Bio Hub to line messaging. Make Almaral bigger than Almaral, make the region big, big enough, robust enough that people can see that really. Line of sight opportunities in our region with all of, all of the localities. And integrate the branding, marketing effort. Alongside being told news, national security work that we're doing on the invasion corridor side. Expanding access to growth capital, that's part of the work that Venture Central was talking about when they were here just a moment ago. So partner with Sebo Bio Hub, regional funders to build connections, develop capital readiness initiative for pitch coaching, grant writing support. Investor matchmaking for life sciences companies and coordinate efforts to pursue large scale grants in the innovation space.
We're moving to the next, I think that's the last one for this. Do we worry that we're putting a lot of? Faith isn't the right word, but we're relying on Sebo Bio Hub, so a lot of this, we've seen a number of times in this goal in particular. With running the Commonwealth Bio Accelerator and everything else. Are we certain that we've got the bandwidth and the capability to do all those things that the county is suggesting that they're capable of doing? And if not, who else in the community might be able to take on some of that? Because if you don't necessarily, and, and Dr. Hastings is fabulous. Will somebody bigger scoops her up? Are we confident that Sebo Bio Hub will continue in its way? So, so there's a lot of, and this is very important, this is an important area for our community, so. So what's, you know, is there another group or another alternative? I'm not saying they're not capable, I'm saying, we certainly are capable, but you know, let's make sure we're covered in the event. Things change.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good feedback. I think we, we tried not to name specific groups unless there was one that was just already so established in that space. And I think that was the rationale for naming Sebo Bio Hub. But it's a good point that. Ourselves enough space if there was a shift there. Into the agricultural economy, this, this one talks about land use and zoning policies. And I'll just take a second to point out that the. Things listed in the strategic plan are, this is sort of staff's way of communicating with board supervisors. These are projects that we could work on over the next five years. Each one of them would be its own then implementation plan. And so inclusion in the economic development strategic plan is not, is not adoption by the board supervisors to enact any of these specifically. It's just sort of setting an intent to, to launch things over the course of the next several years. And so anything in here or any of the other roles would have, you know, the full appropriate process to activate. That's some of the questions that we've gotten from the key, so just wanted to take a second to say. Inclusion on this list is not approval, it's just approval to continue its sport. So looking at rural, zoning and land use and how it can support, you know, sort of small, small scale. Value added production, lodging and agritourism, engaging producers and stakeholders in that process. Understanding what they need at a more detailed level and looking at funding for shared use infrastructure. That would serve small and medium sized agri businesses. Again, thinking about on their own, one company might not be able to invest in a major capital item to support their scaling. But if you put a couple of producers together, they might together be able to maximize use of that infrastructure. Looking at. Again, rural infrastructure needs assessment, looking at specialized storage. Continue broadband and I would add wireless, if we did have wireless, access to that one. Shared processing and packing space. Continuing to, to have the agribusinesses come together, our agribusiness community is very diverse. The wineries are sort of one body of producers that are producing a similar product in similar way. But there's a whole other group of agribusinesses that are very different. And so they don't, they don't naturally come together. And one of the things that we learned at some of the stakeholder engagement work that we did was that it's valuable for them to come together. And so is there a role that the county could play to convene agribusinesses? Not monthly, but, but you know, enough that we could hear, get them talking to each other and then that gets us an opportunity for some of their shared things. And then again, looking at shared use corporate models. Rural Business Resource Hub is just another way of providing support, not on a physical side, but more just business support. Looking at ways to do, again, a lot of the things that Venture Central and the S D B C were talking about. Getting books together to understand what kind of those opportunities are. And any, any programming around apple access, grant navigation or readiness that's focused on the agribusiness sector. Sometimes time of day is the most important thing, so you can talk to tech entrepreneurs at one time of day and that's not going to work for your agribusinesses. And so even just recognizing that is a big habit. Wholesaling and scalable market pathways, so helping understand what opportunities there are to access markets. You all provided financial support for the Nelson County Wine Scale Up Project. Nelson County is leading that it's regional in its nature and that's, that's a concrete example of what that work could look like. Are there other opportunities that could participate in the future?
Is your structure and the goals and the details? I can see how you could get some help from the National Intel and Bio Hub. Who's helping you kind of develop the agricultural? And do you have, because you just said, just knowing when they're available. I mean, I, I'm a city boy, I wouldn't have a first, I couldn't. You know, but I mean, you know, I mean, so who, who, do you have somebody with that background?
Yeah, so, so there's not advising me specifically, but, but actually a project that Venture Central is working on right now that is grant funded. That falls under their organizational endorsement is, is working on. So Nelson County is leading this wine scale up process. Venture Central is hosting a project right now that's looking at the non-alcohol food and beverage market. And trying to, right now, really just sort of like who are all, where are, where are all those producers? What are they making? Where is their overlaps? How can we again sort of elevate this one farmer's market stand can't. Can't invest on its own in some sort of packaging equipment that they would need to be able to scale to get on grocery store shelves. But are there enough like type businesses where you could say? Gosh, like there really is a market demand for someone to, for someone to bring in to our market some sort of packing solution. And then you can sort of start down that path and engaging. Yeah, so the person who's working on that Venture Central grant was a food based business entrepreneur. And then there's, there's other resources in the community, again, I think it's a lot of just bringing the right folks together. And then the wine industry, the wine industry, we had great feedback from one of our stakeholder committee members that the wine industry deserved its own strategy. So this is in addition from the last time you all saw this document. Really just, just taking advantage of the fact that there's a lot of attention on Almaral wine right now and we should leverage that. And that that sector is big enough that, that they could probably be building in a special, specialized way. And so this is looking at workforce training pathways. Partnerships for sustainable practices, marketing and branding and looking at some of the regulatory barriers that exist in that sector specifically.
Is there enough overlap between wineries and cideries and distilleries?
Potentially, that's some, that's one of the things I think we need to look at. I know from a, a land use operational standpoint under the state code, they are treated as compliant. But when it comes to the specifics, the wineries would say. You know, cideries, apples, apples and pops can, can have a longer shelf life than grapes. And so the production pressures that the wineries have are a little bit different than what the cideries and the breweries experience. So, so sometimes yes, sometimes no, I think there's a, there's areas overlap for sure.
Mostly because the wine industry globally is facing all sorts of pressures. We're seeing. Places, you know, wine or vendors literally tearing up vines instead of planting. Or leaving grapes on the vine, it's a, it's a challenging global market, not just a local market. And, and I get trying to do it, but I, again, if we're looking as, as broad as we can across the. I don't want us to be, hey, look at us, we're the booze capital of the East Coast. But on the other hand, we do have a diverse beverage production and market and opportunity there. That's the only reason why singling out wine when the breweries or. Cideries or the meteries or the distilleries are all going to come back and.
I've actually talked to a couple of wineries, they said they're pretty proud of this. Which goes, you know what I'm going to go into, bringing in where applicable restaurants. But being able to have a restaurant that's where applicable in some of these wineries, which would pay, bring in more people. People eat, they, so they don't drive drunk because I think I mentioned that before you go and check for winery, which I like. But they give you oyster crackers, you give me oyster crackers and one glass of wine. I'm embarrassed. So I think it's, I think we need to do something or add something there that would. You know, help, help them out where we could, so that they don't go under, so that they are making money, which is what we want. We want them to be profitable, so hopefully.
What were the reasons why they told you they would, they're three to five years from going out of business?
They, they said that the market is so. Competition and also they have what they call distributors. So our local wineries cannot sell, they cannot take their wine right here, go two blocks. Exaggerated to Costco, give me a wine. Exaggerated to Costco, give me a wine. You go through a distributor who takes a margin. Then that from the distributor goes to Costco. So they're not being profitable. And.
Friend is great. I get it from a friend. It's great stuff.
But don't put that on.
But you're, but you're right. I mean, I would be free Costco or Sam's or, and it was like, I couldn't find a Virginia wine, but there's a zillion California wines.
Yeah, there are state laws that hit what they're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, you go through a distributor and I don't know about California one, they may not have to go through a Virginia distributor. A national market. So that's. It's a tough business.
Yeah, legislative initiative coming along.
Um, we're getting late in the afternoon. I'm going to go very quickly through the next two so that you all can get to discussion. But this, this is where lodging, food and beverage and agritourism come in. And part really this one's about partnering with CSCBD. And then as we get into the talent, we talked about talent in the first three goals. So this is more broad based talent initiatives. Looking at, again, being really intentional about those career pathways for, for high school students that maybe. Thinking in the middle school students and, and really trying to orient how we instruct. Our learners around the target centers. So that's different ways for us to do that. This is through like creating a more of a uniform platform. Looking at ways to help students understand career opportunities in our community. So they know that this is a vital place to stay. And, and then thinking this is a good place for young people to be, for them to have more visibility into the social aspects of, of living and working here. Trying to look at opportunities to improve nightlife, to compete, not necessarily compete against Richmond. And then looking at housing development and childcare initiative. And the plan isn't the driver to lead those efforts, but to really reinforce the opportunities for, where we can improve some of the outcomes on those two items. And then the last one is really around more of the structural things that the county is responsible for that help set the business environment. So permitting and development processes, looking at ways to modernize our zoning code and, and improve the permitting process. Looking at how those timelines might be reduced and with transparency and coordination. Looking at really just talking to the development community, the development community touches a lot of pieces. They touch housing, they touch site development, they touch. Building. Excuse me. And so talking to them more and understanding what some of their pain points are, opportunities for us to be better partners could look like. This is kind of a keep doing. So we've formalized over the past several months, our business retention expansion program. There's still work to do there and so we should keep going. It's a good way to, to get an understanding of what some of our interesting businesses are confronting, what their plans for future might be and how. This is the EDA. So how do we sort of define the EDA's strategic investment priorities? I think it's important on, if you look at how you can help activate the plan. As well as understanding what some other opportunities in our to bring investment to the region could look like. And then this is looking at really our buildings and sites. So in a business, when we're talking to businesses about potentially locating in Charlotte, in the Albemarle region. Do we have the right things? Now that we have these targets that were articulated, we can understand what their specialized needs are and do we have the product that they need? And if not, how do we partner to get that? This is looking at utility, connecting utilities, the airport, the other things that the business community relies on. To understand opportunities for us to work together towards the same outcomes. And then another sort of marketing branding initiative to, to talk about how, how Albemarle is a place for innovation and a great place to, to hone in operating. So with that, I will.
So, well, let's see here. I'm going to hear with forehead saying, but I realize we've gone on for a while. One idea I had. You would be, we want to have a special meeting. Between. Before the meeting with board supervisors, we could do a virtual meeting. That way everybody would have a chance to look at the. And then we could give, give feedback. I don't know if that's. Do we see any issues with that? I mean, do you think that would be helpful to the board to get that feedback as opposed to coming to the meeting on the 19th and saying, hey, we've got all the seconds?
Special meeting is the 13th. The board meeting is the 14th.
We did a winery and nothing.
As long as it has a restaurant.
Time of that meeting? What time that meeting? Four o'clock?
No, our next meeting is the night. That's what I was like, I thought that was.
So a virtual, we have the opportunity to do a virtual meeting before the joint.
In the virtual meeting, what are your hopes to achieve, Doc?
Well, I think give people a chance to talk about whatever other issues concerns. I mean, I think there's, there's two ways. Well, there are multiple ways to give feedback, but I think there's discussion amongst this group. For people to raise issues, concerns, whatever. If there is consensus among the EDA that we think something's important, I think we could sort of as a group say. The EDA thinks this is important. And then obviously in, on an individual basis, we can all say. You know, I'm against having restaurants and wineries and send that email to me. That's, I mean, I think we can do all of those ways, but I think having at least one more opportunity for people to look at the plan and it's, and it's.
I agree. I would hope. You, this would make that meeting with the board, the joint session much more productive. We would have our act together and hopefully be on the same page. There'll be some divergence. The last time we met, there were some very clear commonalities, I think, with how we were thinking about this plan. One was metrics, measurable metrics of what is the actual action plan? The other one was the right size makes, this is pretty open ended right now. What does that actually mean for community goals, you know, things like that? Just maybe so that when we have this dialogue, we at least are categorically organized with thoughts. So. I agree.
I'll be able to send the board documents and you'll also have an opportunity to have read sort of the latest.
So maybe what we should do is send out a call or when people are available. I will say that I'm going to Europe for two of those weeks. But we can.
Okay. Okay. We'll, we'll figure that out. Live count. But we can figure that out.
I mean, is there anything that anyone, because I know we have a number of things we need to talk about. Is there anything that anybody wants to say? Specifically.
Just one question. It's, it's a process question. If a citizen wants to comment on this in person. They won't have a chance at that hearing, so they're closed to what's a comment or open.
So the agenda, like the, for example, like the agenda for this meeting had matters from the public. So someone could have come today and shared comment with this body online or in person. The special meeting with the board supervisors, they don't believe how, you know, special meetings don't typically have matters from the public. If you wanted at your next meeting for us to put that into the agenda. So if we have a special session ahead of the joint meeting and you all wanted to carve out time for matters from the public. We could certainly advertise it as such.
Even tonight, we don't have, we have a power thing. But you know, I mean, I don't think we're going to get a crush upon it. But just the, the, it just paid the government, you all want to be part of, they'd like to give everyone the opportunity. If they don't talk, they don't talk. But, but at least they don't have the plan or, or something very close to it.
All right. All right.
Hey, with your permission, I'd like to skip to a closed session. But unless you.
If you don't think there's anything we need to talk about.
We have two fabulous thinkers who are here for the summer. Celeste Weblon has been in my office since, speaking of Europe, since coming back from study abroad. For the spring semester. I'd heard this is her last week. We can't believe the summer session is, is coming towards its end. But Celeste's been really instrumental in helping us do research on items, supporting projects that have popped up. It has been a real pleasure to get to know her and I can't wait to see where she goes. And so I just wanted to introduce Celeste and Noah's hanging around for a little bit longer. So I don't have to be. This is a goodbye to Noah, but Noah has also just really dove right into everything out of the wild. And it's been wonderful to have fresh, bright young minds at our disposal during the summer weeks.
You know, this is a heavy lift and you and your team phenomenal job, you know, this past year. And I, I think, I think so much happens that we don't often stop and thank the people who are doing the, the actual. Me deep in the, in the work. So well done to your team. This, this is good stuff and, and obviously there's still more polishing, but so, I mean, from where we started or where we, like I did, we think. Where you started to where you are now is, is just really, it's. Thank you all.
All right. So moving to the closed meeting. I move with the Albemarle County Economic Development Authority, go into a closed meeting as authorized by the Particular Agreement of Information Act, Section 2.2. Three, seven, one, one, A of the state of Virginia under subsections six and 29. We discussed and consider the expenditure and investment of public funds related to existing performance agreements, which thousands of agri spheres. And related to a potential performance agreement for a commercial development on Seminole Trail in the Ryle Magisterial District. Where marketing is involved and where it made public initially adversely affect EDA's negotiating strategy and against the interest of the EDA. Is there a second?
No, he doesn't have. You did that well, but.
In addition. So subsection eight to discuss and consider consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters. Related to Bonniemo's Inc. Performance Agreement, which requires the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And sub subsection five to discuss and consider. The location of respective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry in the vicinity of Seminole Trail. In the Magisterial District where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries' interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Is there another thing? All right. All in favor? All right. There we go. So we will now go next to. All right. There we go. So we will now go next to a call.
I move as the EDA certified or reported vote that to the best of each director's knowledge we public business managers often exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, identify information authorizing closed meeting, over.
Mr. Speaker.
Second.
Sir.
Sir.
Dr. Wong.
Hi.
Dr. Moore.
Hi.
Dr. Johnson.
Hi.
Dr. Stone.
Hi.
Dr. Hood.
Hi.
Dr. Freezing.
Hi.
And Dr. Murphy.
Hi.
I pronounce that correct?
That's Nick.
Next. I'll get it right next time so.
Alright, thanks everybody. We will adjourn. Our next scheduled regular meeting will be, that's the, that is not the next schedule. Our next special meeting with the Board of Supervisors would be August 13.
The next regular one is the 19th.
Next regular one's the 19th.
Meeting 13th and a 19th.
And then, and then we have a special meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, all will go out.
Yes.
You can run, go.
Yeah, it will be the quiet waiting.